For joining on a call order, the regular meeting of Reno City Planning Commission. Today is Wednesday, January third, two thousand and twenty four. We're in the city of Spark's Legislative Building. Unfortunately, we are having some technical difficulties with our mics. So I would ask everyone to please use your outside voice for this meeting. We are recording it. It's just gonna be a rougher cut than maybe what we're used to. So with that, I'll move to agenda item one, the Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Romano, will you please lead us?
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice as our law.
Closing agenda item one and regaining to agenda item two. Michelle, can we please give you a roll call?
Eric Armstrong?
Here.
Jenny Vissera?
Here.
Arthur Munoz?
Here.
Karen Romeyer?
Here.
Alex Belto is absent. Celia Villanueva?
Here.
J D Dracula is absent. We have a forum.
Thank you. Closing item two, moving to item three, public comment. This item is for public comment on any action item or any general public comment. Go ahead, Michelle.
It should be noted for those in the audience that comments are to be addressed to the planning commission as a whole. Comments heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the planning commission agenda. Please note that the planning commission may not take action upon any matter not adjourned for possible action on today's agenda. When you are called on for public comment, please state your name for the record and begin speaking. The timer will begin when you say your name and you will be afforded three minutes. Lastly, while in this room, please be respectful. Warnings will be issued by the presiding officer if there is disruptive behavior and you will be asked to leave chambers if the behavior continues. With that, we did not receive any request to speak forms, no public comment, and no voicemails were received for this item.
Do we have anyone in the chambers wishing to speak under general public comment? Seeing none, we will close out in three and move on to item four, approval of minutes for the Reno City Planning Commission regular meeting of December seventh, two thousand and twenty three. Do we have any questions, abstentions, discussion items before entertaining a motion on this? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the minutes.
Okay.
Can you state your name, please? Commissioner Romano, I move to approve the minutes. Thank you.
Commissioner Vissera, second.
Okay, having a motion in the second.
Mr. Chairman, on the second. Trying to find if I was at this meeting or not. I might have to abstain. Commissioner Munoz, I have to abstain from this.
Can you state your name?
Commissioner Munoz.
Do you wanna do a roll call vote? Just to...
Yeah, we need to.
Since we're on audio.
Okay, perfect. Okay, so starting with Commissioner Romeyer.
Uh, yea.
Commissioner Vissera?
Yea.
Commissioner Villanueva?
Yea.
Uh, aye. Uh, motion carries. We will close out approval of minutes and move on to item five, public hearings. Any person who has chosen to provide his or her public comment when the public hearing is heard will need to so indicate all their request to speak form provided to the secretary. Alternatively, you may provide your comment when item three, public comment, is heard at the beginning of this meeting. We will begin with item five point one, L D C two four dash zero zero two seven, Muscle Motors Addition Time Extension. So we'll have a presentation from the applicant.
Yeah, for the record, Dave Snellgrove. I'm the planning manager with C F A Bowman. You're representing the applicant. I don't have a presentation for you tonight. It's a pretty straightforward request of the time extension. We'd been granted a one-year time extension, which was done administratively. They're getting plans in place, working on those now. It needed more time. This expires, I think, February third, and we won't have plans ready in time, but they are working on those. But with that, we're requesting an additional six months to have the time.
It looks like we'll get a presentation from the staff as well.
Yes. Good morning, commissioners. Carter Williams, Assistant Planner, for the record. The first item tonight is a time extension for a conditional use permit for the Muscle Motors Auto Service and auto sales and service facility. The two point five four acre site is located on the southwest corner of Holcomb Lane and South Virginia Street. This is related to the original conditional use permit, L D C twenty one sixty eight, which was to establish a auto, or sorry, to expand an existing auto service and sales facility. It was further amended to change the site plan slightly and administrative, or a minor modification last year. So some background, so the original approval was in July of two thousand and twenty one, which with the standard eighteen month expiration date that it was due to expire in January two thousand and twenty three. The applicant requested an administrative time extension of twelve months, extending it to January two thousand and twenty four. And the last recourse is a six-month extension that can only be approved by the planning commission. That would extend this application to July of two thousand and twenty four. The property is located within the mixed-use suburban zone. And the two items on the original conditional use permit were for the expansion of the auto service and sales facility, but also addressing residential adjacency to the, to the west. This was the now-approved site plan. Originally, the site plan included an additional building to the south, but that was removed with that minor modification mentioned previously. But the expansion current, or the current iteration of the site plan includes a seventy-six hundred square foot showroom and a twelve thousand square foot service facility and associated improvements. There are only two findings associated with time extensions, whether the project is appropriate in the originally approved location and whether or not there are any additional conditions necessary to mitigate adverse impacts or to protect the public interest. From staff's review and analysis, we don't, we don't have any indication of change for the project that... So we see that it is still appropriate for the area and that the existing conditions of approval address concerns in the, in the staff report originally. And on the screen is the recommended motion. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Carter. We'll now move it back to the commissioners for disclosures, starting with Commissioner Villanueva.
Commissioner Villanueva, I was present for the last time this was presented. No other disclosures.
Commissioner Munoz?
Uh, Commissioner Munoz, no disclosures.
Commissioner Vissera, if there were a second.
Commissioner Romeyer, no disclosures.
Commissioner Armstrong, no disclosures. We will now move to public comment. I have no request to speak forms. Michelle, is there anything on your end?
We did not receive any voicemails, no correspondence was received, and no request to speak forms were received.
Do we have anyone in the chambers wishing to speak, wishing to speak on this item at this time? Seeing none, I will close public comment and we'll take it back to the commissioners for questions. Commissioner Vissera?
Sure. Carter, what exactly is the reason for the extension? Like, what was the impediment?
I'm, I'm not aware about that the applicant can speak to that.
Again, for the record, Dave Snellgrove with C F A Bowman. Over the past few years, we've had a lot of interest rate hikes. The cost of money's gone up. There have been things that have held them back from being able to move forward proactively and productively on this. They're moving forward on getting plans together. It's an expensive process and they, they've got enough to get going on it now. But that's been a big part of the slowdown.
Confident, I, that these six months will be enough to...
We're hopeful because there's another relief mechanism in the code. But we're, we're working on the plans and we'll probably have those into the city. The requirement per condition is that you have to submit a complete set of building plans within the timeframe allotted. So within that six months, yes, we do feel confident that we'll be able to accomplish that.
That's great. Carter, my, just, this is a theme that we saw last meeting, right? Like, those interest rates and just two thousand and twenty three being a part year.
Yeah, that, we did have a similar case last meeting that, yeah, was, kind of, it sounded the same reasons. But, great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the commission?
Commissioner Villanueva can make a motion.
Okay, ready to make, sorry, ready to entertain a motion?
Based upon the client, excuse me, who may identify the application. Is it? Oh, there it goes. Um, with respect to L D C twenty four zero 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 two seven, based upon the client's applicable findings, I move to approve the six-month time extension for the conditional use permit, L D C twenty one zero 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 six eight, subject to the existing conditions as amended by the minor modification, A B M one three zero 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 two eight.
Do we have a second?
Commissioner Romeyer, second.
Okay. We will now enter roll call vote, starting with Commissioner Villanueva.
Aye, yes.
Commissioner Munoz?
Aye.
Commissioner Vissera?
Aye.
And Commissioner Romeyer?
Aye.
Commissioner Armstrong, aye. Uh, motion passes unanimously. Give love for your project. We'll now close item five point one and move to item five point two, case number L D C two four dash zero 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 two six, seven eleven at Golden Valley.
Uh, for the record, Ryan Sims, Axion Engineering, here on behalf of the applicant slash owner. You can see their name up there. DGOC is kinda what they go by. They are not local and they're not here tonight. They were planning on either participating or watching, you know, via YouTube, but I think I'll handle it myself tonight. I'd like to just give you a quick overview of the project. Project proposes a forty-eight hundred and change square foot convenience store on a two point three seven acre site. It's currently undeveloped. It sits right at the southwest corner of West Golden Valley Road and North Virginia Street. They plan to have seventeen total fuel dispensers and four electric vehicle charging stations. And they propose to have twenty-four hour operation. Uh, the reason we're here tonight is to request a conditional use permit based on two aspects of the development. First, the proposed gas station use requires a minor conditional use permit per city code in the mixed suburban, mixed-use suburban zoning. Second, the Reno city code requires a conditional use permit for operating hours between eleven P M and six A M. None of the exemptions, exemptions in the code to those hours of use apply to this project. Uh, we believe the project as proposed will be consistent with the Reno master plan and all the findings can be made. As I'll discuss in a moment, the gas station use and hours of operation meet the purpose of the existing master plan designation and the existing zoning. The project, along with upcoming R T C capacity improvements on North Virginia Street, will mitigate any traffic impacts and also provide pedestrian and bicycle improvements per the findings. The project is an infill project in an area that has very similar uses and facilities to serve it exist at the site. I stole a couple of displays from Carter just to show the existing zoning and master plan use. And you can see the, the existing zoning and the master plan use is compatible with all the development surrounding it. Just like to point out that, again, like I mentioned, the proposed C U P request will enable the project to conform with and meet the existing zoning purpose. Uh, the stated purpose of the mixed suburban, mixed-use suburban use is, quote, "to intend, intended to accommodate a mix of low-intensity auto-oriented uses while supporting the gradual transition of the city's suburban corridors to a mix of higher-density residential, retail, commercial, and other employment and service-oriented uses." We feel that the proposed gas station use and the twenty-four hour operation will serve to meet that purpose and provide services to operations in the area. Residents that commute to and from work both during normal hours and twenty-four hour shift work elsewhere in the region and at nearby industrial logistical employers and, as well as, as well serves travelers and transportation workers along the U S three ninety-five corridor. I wanted to point out that a traffic impact study was prepared for the site. I just listed the study findings and recommendations. Summary is that the project will not result in any reduced levels of service either now or in the future, provided that R T C project moves forward. The project will be designed to meet all recommendations in the traffic impact study, including the heavy industrial driveways. And the project will pay regional road impact fees with permit. The report also considered the upcoming R T C capacity improvement project on North Virginia Street. Both the traffic engineer and myself have been in contact with R T C to coordinate with them. As I mentioned, we did work with R T C regarding the expected furniture improvements. Obviously, their, their project is in the very, very early stages of design. So basically, what we know is it'll be a five-lane street, two lanes in each direction, and a center turn lane. The one thing they could tell us was, based on the pedestrian and bicycle programming they have in the area, that a ten-foot multi-use path would be proposed along our property frontage. So with our plans, we're gonna propose to construct that. Also wanted to put up, point out that, you know, areas of sensitivity in the area, we are in the North Valley Swan Lake drainage area. So the project will propose to retain the one point three times of the hundred-year ten-day storm event in accordance with the, the policy out there. And we're providing for pass-through of upstream drainage to the site. Building design and signage, you know, we're not asking anything special for either one of those building, including articulation and transparency, will be designed to meet code and, and zoning standards. None of the signage is proposed to exceed that allowed by code. Another thing to mention, we will be proposing to provide some enhanced pedestrian amenities along the frontage to meet some of the standards of the mixed-use suburban zoning. I included a site display. And I thought I had, let's go back. Ah, there was a little more. But a site displayed in case we needed for any further discussion. With that, I'll end my presentation and I'll be available for any questions the commission may have. Thank you.
Presentation from staff?
The second item tonight is a, excuse me, Carter Williams, Assistant Planner, for the record. The second item tonight is a conditional use permit to establish a gas, a twenty-four hour gas station use. The two point three seven acre site, as noted, is on the southwest corner of North Virginia Street and Golden Valley Road. Property is located within the mixed-use suburban zone, which triggers gas station, or a conditional use permit for the gas station use and the hours of operation past eleven P M. It's located within the industrial zone, and I think it's important to note that the, the current mixed-use suburban zone is non-conforming. In the future, the zoning likely will transition to some type of industrial zone, whether it's industrial, commercial, or just industrial, probably industrial, commercial. Generally, the project meets various master plan policies, including community development, cost of growth relating to the installation of that ten-foot multi-use path and onsite pedestrian and bicycles, bicycle circulation for employment areas. The site, one concern that staff has is compatibility with the area. The surrounding development includes outdoor storage, industrial warehouse facilities, and across North Virginia Street is a twenty-four hour gas station that operates in a very similar capacity to what this one will. There is residentially zoned property to the south and the west, but it is located outside of the buffer that we traditionally apply residential adjacency standards to. And there is obviously a significant buffer between, or of existing industrial development, approved industrial development that's yet to be built and the, the railroad spur line. This is the site plan with, with actually the landscape plan. One thing to note is that the, the site will be built to mixed-use suburban standards. As I noted before, with the industrial zone, we would see a lot less landscaping. The architecture is, would be, have less requirements. So generally, this, this zone calls for a lot more, which I think aligns more with R T C's plan with, with that, that multi-use path and that multimodal corridor. So, um, on the screen are the recommended findings. Through staff's review and analysis, we were able to meet all the findings. And the recommended motion is on the screen. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you. We'll now take it back to the commissioners for disclosures. Commissioner Romeyer?
Commissioner Romeyer, any disclosures?
Commissioner Vissera, if there were a second.
Commissioner Munoz, if there were a second.
Commissioner Romeyer, any disclosures?
Commissioner Armstrong, no disclosures. Uh, we'll now move to public comment. I have no request to speak forms. Michelle, do you have anything on your end?
No voicemails, no request to speak forms, and no correspondence received for this item.
Uh, do we have anyone in the chambers wishing to speak on this item at this time? Seeing none, I will take it back to the commission for questions.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Minister, I'll start.
Okay.
Two concerns. Uh, this will be for the representative for the governor. First off, with the, it, it is set up to have a semi-truck refueling there. Is there gonna be any parking spots or any, any places where semi-trucks will be able to park there? Or is it gonna be a pull-through, pull-out? I'd rather not have, because of the residential, I know there is, there's two buffers there, but I'd rather not have truck parking in that area. I don't think it's compatible with...
Uh, yeah, for the record, Ryan Sims. Yeah, there's no proposed truck parking onsite. I think their operational, you know, stuff they wanna do, they want trucks idling, sitting idling on the property. The fueling station that can handle the trucks, I think they see that more as a large vehicle, diesel fueling, rather than, you know, heavy semis for the most part.
Okay.
But yeah, there will be no truck parking provided onsite, and they'll enforce that with their operation.
Okay, and then the last thing, there is a seven eleven less than a mile away, probably half a mile away. Are these two related in any way? Because, and the reason I bring that up is, on Lemon Valley, a year ago, we had the same, same thing happen where they put in a full service station, seven eleven. They put the other seven eleven out of business, which was less than a mile. Are there similar concerns of these connected at all?
I'm not aware if they are or not. There has been no discussion that I know of regarding whether they're related or not. Yeah, I am aware of the, the seven eleven just down the street, so...
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Vissera, go ahead.
Sure, for Mr. Sims, probably. Well, I thought it was cool that there's four charging stations. Each charging station is separate?
Yes.
Yeah. Is it vendor lock or is it the adapters universal? Or how does that work for the general public?
Um, I believe they intend to make them universal.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I don't think that's in stone as of yet, so...
Carter, do you have anything?
Not, no, I don't have any.
I'm just curious. I know it's early, it's kind of early, I think, for most...
Yep.
Any additional questions? Any discussion on this item? I can entertain a motion? Okay. Do we wanna go back to discussion or question?
Oh, I was gonna ask Commissioner Munoz a question, but maybe he's just looking, are you looking for the motion?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, I was gonna ask, if you're not okay with it, then it's your word. I was just gonna ask if there was concern.
No, actually, let's, let's, let's have a quick discussion.
Sure.
So, like I mentioned, Commissioner Munoz, for the record, like I mentioned, there was a similar instance where a smaller seven eleven was put out of business as the, the, the new one was being built less than half a mile away. This is gonna be, my speculation, the exact same, um, the exact same thing is gonna happen. There's not gonna be any for a smaller, a smaller convenience store when a larger, more convenient convenience store is, is in the works. So that does leave me, I don't wanna say hesitant, but to take a good look at it. This, this is a great use of the area. The area does need to be used. It's been vacant for as many years as I've been out there for up to twenty years. So it is a good use of the area. It is a good location for this. It's right off the freeway. Other than the conflicting, two businesses there, I, I don't see any problem. There's gas stations all around the area.
Sure.
So, um, other than that, I, I can't come up with any reason not to. Which is why this would be a project for the area.
I had a little bit of a... I, I had a question about the economic considerations.
Can you state them?
Commissioner Romeyer, apologies. We aren't allowed economic considerations, is that correct? Maybe this is for, like...
So economic considerations are not part of the required findings? Are not part of the findings for the commission?
Sorry, can you state them?
By question, if you're ready.
And may I just say that, once the city would transition this to an industrial zoning, this would be allowed by rate, is my understanding.
That's correct.
So it would happen.
The twenty-four hour operations is still required.
Correct, the twenty-four hour operation would trigger, but there is no residence or...
And the drainage issues, but, but yeah, not being often. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Do you have anything?
I was just saying that the drainage would trigger, would not trigger the commission's permit. It would be in a segment area.
Okay.
The administrative...
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Munoz, bring him in.
Okay.
Case number L D C twenty four dash zero 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 two six seven eleven, Golden Valley. Based upon the client's applicable findings, I move to approve the conditional use permit, subject to conditions listed in the staff report. Now I can add the findings.
We have a motion. Do you have a second?
Commissioner Romeyer, second.
We have a motion and a second. We'll go into roll call vote. Commissioner Villanueva?
Yes.
Commissioner Munoz?
Yes.
Commissioner Vissera?
Yes.
Commissioner Romeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Armstrong, yes. The motion passes unanimously. Give love to your project.
Appreciate it, thank you.
So we'll now close out item five point two and move into item five point three, case number L D C two four dash zero 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 two five, Ralston Fraternity Sorority House. Looks like we'll take a presentation from the applicant.
Yes.
Commissioner Munoz, thank you.
You want to go? Good evening, commissioners. My name is Emily Stevenson. My husband Kurt Stevenson is here right behind me, as well as two representatives from our Housing Administrative Board. And, here we go. So, um, we purchased the house at eight oh three Ralston, and we are asking for a fraternity sorority house for the Kappa Sigma fraternity that is recognized in good standing with the University of, yeah, Nevada Reno. Just a view of the property here, the house, as it was listed when we purchased it in, I believe, April. And then the view from above, it's located across from Whitaker Park and adjacent to another house and then kind of an apartment-type complex and then another apartment-type complex directly behind it as well. So just a little overview of the property. It was built in nineteen twenty-four. It has five bedrooms, two point two bath of livable area, and it's located within walking distance of U N R. It does have a detached garage with a yard space between it, which you can kinda see in the first picture where the garage is versus where the house is. Um, I just wanted to point out that, I know it's not referred to as a fraternity frat row, but I, I was in a sorority Sigma Kappa, which is right down the street from this, and all of the properties listed, as well as the ones highlighted on the map... as well as the ones highlighted on the map there, show the fraternities and sororities operating with special conditional use permits within the zone. We are within the MF thirty zone, which permits this, um, if we are approved. And, uh, it shows we're right in the vicinity, in fact, up Ralston is another fraternity, um, as well. Um, as what the fraternity would be using the property for is the communal use for members only, active members, meaning UNR students attending school in good standing with the university, as well as the fraternity renting for a residence. Um, but on top of that, they would like to host chapter meetings, which my understanding would be weekly, um, as well as they would have designated study areas throughout the week if other students live further away from UNR, but between classes wanted to stop study, as well as a social hub for events such as inviting alumni over, um, having Greek socials, um, and for recruitment purposes during the fall and spring semesters. Um, the operations are, um, a part of our lease is that our master lease with the fraternity, which actually, let me break that down first, I apologize. We, my husband and I own the property. The local fraternity is overseen by their national fraternity. Uh, they, the national fraternity has put in place a local housing board that consists of all alumni, not students that are going to school right now, that don't consist of the executive board. They are members of the community that are graduates and alumni of the fraternity and the university, that are overseeing the housing board itself as a liaison between the national and the local chapter. Um, we also in our lease, uh, have a provision that the fraternity, the local fraternity, has to remain in good standing with the University of Nevada Reno. Otherwise, there is a clause where they have to vacate, I believe it's within thirty days, of their loss of good standing. Um, and then we also have the current executive board, which are the gentlemen that are currently going to school, but run the executive chapter, who are UNR students, and then obviously the members. So there's a bunch of oversight between us as the owners, the national fraternity, the alumni housing board, and then the, you know, executive and the actual members. Um, that being said, um, the residents themselves have to be in good standing. Um, all the members must adhere to UNR rules and regulations, as well as the fraternities. Um, we did write a provision into the lease and sublease that quiet hours follow, uh, what's here on the screen, and I pulled that from the city website, but I believe if that were to change, there's something there that says we would follow the city ordinance as far as quiet times and quiet hours outside of an allotted special use event permit. Um, we did receive a couple calls early on in September where, um, there were nuisance complaints, um, and since then, we've also, um, installed security cameras inside the house, as well as outside of the house. Um, and we spoke with the gentleman, as well as the neighbors that we knew, um, that own all the surrounding properties, our immediate neighbors and the two adjacent apartment, uh, he, the same gentleman owns this, those. Um, and we spoke to them about anytime they have any issues, or if there are nuisance complaints, please let us know. If there's any issues with the boys, we gave them all our direct contact info, and at that point in time, um, they said it had gotten better, that was roughly October, I believe, after the noise complaints came in. Um, these are current pictures of the property. Um, we did remove several, um, trees and stuff that were impeding A, the foundation, but B, the, um, like, uh, sewage pipes, um, 'cause they're clay. Uh, we did, we've had, have talked to the commission, which I'll get there, but, um, about replanting the landscaping to be in compliance for the permit, as well as the residential area, and keeping it beautiful as it always has been. Um, as you can see, this is the front room where the boys enter. This would be the common dining room slash study area. Um, this is the side yard garage area in the fourth picture, and then the upstairs hallway, as we've replaced, you know, the doors, painted the walls, we've put in a bunch of work since purchasing it, just aesthetically to make it, um, updated. And then, again, sorry, these pictures kind of expanded, but it's just to show you the proximity, there's the park here. Um, in the third picture, you can see, uh, where we are at in proximity to St. Mary's Hospital on the one corner, and then directly across from the park, and then a view kind of flipped around, you can see all of UNR in the background, and how close, um, the boys would be. Um, so, again, I said we en- enforced quiet hours, we've installed the video cameras, the doors also, we, um, the alumni, or the housing board, installed electric keypads that only the residents have, so not all of the members. So during the day, there has to be somebody who is a resident there, or they have to have permission to enter, other members to enter the premises, to get into the house, so it's not just an open door policy. And again, it's a coded keypad for the doors. Um, and then all social gatherings as well have to be approved by the alumni housing board. So if the boys, the executive committee, the members want to have a social gathering at the house, they must first get it approved by the local alumni housing board, who make that decision, and then we go from there, whether they need a permit, et cetera, and when, and if those can, um, take place. And again, the housing boards are, are the ones that control the, um, security systems and the videos, so they would easily be able to see if something were happening in the house, um, outside of hours or outside of, you know, a permitted social gathering. Um, the outlined social gathering areas, which are in, uh, is in Carter's, um, presentation, uh, we would agree to keep them, uh, the gatherings to that area out of the main house, kind of in the side yard area, and the garage, which we would like to clean up and use as more of a social area and gathering place, as opposed to parking, um, which is why we agree to lower the numbers of occupants to, um, coincide with the parking regulations. Um, the alumni housing board conducts weekly inspections of the house, um, as part of the sublease with all of the boys, and myself and my husband are, do monthly housing inspections, um, of the house per our master lease with the housing board and the national fraternity. However, I can tell you, we are probably there on a weekly basis, just trying to keep an eye on it, making sure that things are clean and going according to plan. Um, we, uh, do, 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 sorry, we agree with the findings, which you'll see here soon, um, including reinstalling the side stairs for another fire exit, we had initially removed those for fear of, you know, a liability issue, um, but it looks like they need to be reinstalled, we're fine with that. Um, there are some permitting issues with, um, things that were not permitted with the previous owner that were installed, that we are willing to get permits for retroactively. Uh, we weren't there when some of the things, again, were installed without permits. Um, and then obviously bringing the landscaping up to the MF thirty zoning standards, which I discussed. Um, our plans for future improvements are to, um, paint the exterior, um, of the house and the garage. Um, and then we would like to get a permit and install a fence along the common gathering area, which is kind of that side yard, to give the boys a little area of privacy. And if there is a social gathering, it's not, it's kind of out on the street, there's a little bit of privacy there that most of the other, um, fraternities have in their back areas, or, you know, other fenced areas. Um, we've also, um, you know, patched up the roof, installed railing along the, there's an area going down to the basement, we didn't want anybody to fall, we've put, uh, railing up along there. We've increased the height of the railing along the balcony area, but the balcony area is also prohibited, um, to members for use. It's just, we feel it's too much of a liability, and there are, um, that is also part of their sublease, uh, with the housing board. And with that, I thank you for your time, and I think it's your turn.
Carter, whenever you're ready.
Yes. All right, again, Carter Williams, assistant planner for the record. Um, last, uh, tonight is a, uh, conditional use permit to establish a fraternity and sorority, or sorority house. The property is located in the northwest corner of Ralston Street and university terrace. Um, key issues that we analyzed in the staff report are compatibility with surrounding uses and compliance with code. The property is located within the multifamily thirty, um, thirty units per acre zoning district. It is also within the West University neighborhood plan. A feature of that plan, um, is that it does include, uh, a, um, appended land use table that cha- that permits and prohibits certain, um, uses within, within the area, um, of the West University pla- uh, neighborhood plan. Uh, I should note that MF twenty-one has a specific prohibition on, um, fraternity or sorority houses, so, um, we can say that staff at the time, or through the plan creation process, they contemplated, um, fraternity or sorority houses, um, within this area, and within the MF thirty district specifically, as, as those, that kind of, this corridor runs into a part of the plan that is explicitly called the university district, it's, it's, it's kind of on the boundary with the tra- a traditional neighborhood and the university district. Um, the property has the master plan land use designation of multifamily neighborhood, um, and, um, a few pro- policies within the master plan support this, including the redevelopment of underutilized properties, and the tree installation retention replacement, specifically those that were, not just removed, but the ones, ones that, um, should have been parked, uh, placed in the parkway, that were removed years ago. Um, we don't really have record of them, but they did exist at one point. Um, this is a picture of the, the existing building, it was constructed originally in nineteen twenty-four as a single-family home. Between nineteen ninety and twenty nineteen is, it was used as an older adult care facility, um, and during that time, a number of upgrades were made, um, particularly the, in nineteen ninety-six, and around that time for that matter, the, uh, fire sprinklers were installed, and a fire alarm system was installed, which is, um, they never went to an occupancy change, which should have been required, um, but they did install spr- fire sprinklers, so it's, it's a kind of a boon for that property, especially with the higher occupancy. Um, generally through the property's history, there was a lot of unpermitted work, um, the, the garage was permitted, um, but there are, uh, utilities in the basement and, and features in the basement that, um, were never permitted, including a second kitchen. Um, in review, um, of the compatibility with surrounding uses, generally the area is characterized by a number, a mix of, um, residential housing, um, or a mix of different housing, um, options. Uh, there's multifamily, single-family, duplexes, and I think there is even a dormitory, um, nearby. Um, there are five fraternity or sorority houses within a quarter mile, all located along university terrace. Um, and the property is located within a half mile walking distance from the, the university. Um, staff does have concerns with noise associated with soc- social gatherings, there were, um, pre- previous calls to service for this site, um, in the last few months. Um, so from a code perspective, outdoor live entertainment or amplified sound is prohibited, um, being that it's in a residential zone. Indoor live entertainment would follow the ru- same rules as any accessory live entertainment that would be applied to, to any property, including those in MF thirty, we don't really, we, we, it's, it's citywide, that, that ordinance. Um, the staff recommends a condition that outdoor gathering areas be limited to the side yard area represented in green, and they be prohibited in the area represented in red. Um, and that, um, from staff's perspective, it kind of takes it off of that, I mean, the corner, um, where I think it would be most impactful, and it secures it in an area where I think it's safer. Um, in addition to that, um, staff recommends an, uh, a condition that events exceeding twenty-five persons, um, require a special activity permit. Special activity permits are, um, implemented by the business license division, and they are limited to six per year. From the code compliance perspective, there was an inspection performed by the planning division, building division, and the code enforcement department. Um, the primary concern that was identified through those inspections was that there was, uh, there was an emergency exit staircase that was installed, um, we're actually not sure if it was permitted or when it was installed, but, um, it was, uh, it was demolished. Um, that, uh, by condition, we're recommending it be reinstalled by March first of twenty twenty-four, that's from the building division, um, building inspectors, as a recommendation. Um, the basement, which has a, a, it's, it was finished without permits, either, um, or must be vacated and either permitted, um, to be, to return to an unfinished state, or be permitted to allow for, um, its habitation, uh, moving forward. Uh, the max, um, staff recommends a condition to limit the occupancy to twelve, and that's based on available parking, um, for the site, um, both on, on-street and on-site parking. And staff also recommends a condition, um, that requires that the site be brought, um, into conformance with landscaping standards, and that's twenty percent of the site for, the site for this zone. Um, this also includes replanting trees, um, I think it's once, one tree per thirty feet, um, within the parkway strip. There are some existing trees, mature trees in that parkway that will be retained, and that's, that's also, they're protected by code. And the review of those permits will go through the urban forester, and we'll look, also look at kind of the material that's being used in those parkway strips, um, to ensure that they're not causing any issues with the, um, the, uh, curb drainage. On the screen are the, uh, findings for a conditional use permit. Um, staff was able to meet all the findings with the, uh, um, conditions, uh, recommended. And then this motion is on the screen. Um, that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Okay, we'll now take it back to the commissioners for disclosures, uh, Commissioner Royer, can you say?
Uh, Commissioner Royer, uh, received emails, voicemails, and visited the site.
Commissioner Busar, same disclosures, and familiar with the site?
Commissioner Munoz, same disclosures, and also familiar with the site.
Commissioner, uh, Bellamy, got ready emails, sent to me, and I am telling this side.
Uh, Commissioner Armstrong, I've read and received emails, I'm familiar with the site, I listened to voicemails. Uh, we'll now move to public comments. I, looks like a request to speak form was submitted.
Received two request to speak forms. Correspondence was received and forwarded to the planning commission. Um, voicemails were also received, and we'll play this for you, um, if you wanna do the public comment first.
Uh, yeah, let's start with public comment, and we can do voicemails. Okay, uh, looks like the first one we had is Vicki Bischoff.
Vicki, we don't have microphones, so you need to use your outdoor voice. Just stand right here and put in, 'cause we have phones, you can just write in here.
Okay, thank you, would it be possible, you could just read what I wrote, or I can just read it out loud, I'd rather, can I take the paper and hold it?
Whatever your preference is, yeah.
Just make sure I get it right.
You guys?
Thank you.
Yeah.
And then just stand by the computer, 'cause the, we're recording.
Okay, thank you. Okay, hi, thank you everybody, my name is Vicki Bischoff. I live at eight forty-seven Ralston Street, about a half a block up from the house in question. Uh, thank you very much for giving me a chance to speak. Um, my husband and I bought our home in June of twenty eighteen as a downsized affordable place to live after retirement. We thoroughly checked out the neighborhood and found that almost all the tenants were multifamily housing around us. They were working people, they were quiet, we met a lot of them, they were working folks like us. Uh, we invested a substantial amount of money and time into our property in order to make this comfortable place to live, and we fully understood that we lived next to Daryl Dunkle, uh, the American Legion Hall. Uh, Daryl Dunkle has turned out to be a great neighbors, they're respectful, they're inside by ten o'clock, uh, they pick up their trash every day after an event, uh, they ask us if there's any issues with parking. Uh, our new neighbors, though, have not been respectful. Uh, they're, the noise and foot traffic ca- cost us a tenant, uh, whose email to me I submitted. Um, we, uh, have had, there was an obscene banner across the front of the building. I know it's college kids, but it was embarrassing to have my kids, and my grandkids especially, come drive by there to visit us. Uh, the amount of people walking up and down, uh, tossing energy drinks and white claw cans, uh, during this last summer, it just, it caused a lot of traffic, and it made the neighborhood look super trashy. Um, we, uh, read the staff report, uh, from the citizens advisory, that there was a citizens advisory meeting in December. We never got that notice and I talked to about twenty neighbors around us. Nobody got that notice, but a lot of them are tenants and so the owners of the building got them and the tenants didn't. Um we implore you not to grant this request, which will continue to allow obsessive drinking and partying. Um that your, your photos even show beer pong tables out in front. Uh and I know that has to be moved around to the side, but if you see from the pictures, there's two apartment buildings that are straight, straight shot with bikes, little kids living there. We bought the property knowing what it was. They bought their property knowing what it was. Allowing them this change in the rules depreciates our tru- our property value, but also our quality of life. So I really implore you to not grant this zoning request. Thank you all for your time.
Can I get the request to speak for back? You just give it to them? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh I have another request to speak for from Marissa Fernandez.
Oh, she's not here. She just sent that.
Oh, okay, so you just want to have this in there. Do you, you want me to read the statement from Vicki?
Thank you.
Uh she says, hi Vicki, I'm happy to write this note for you. I was a tenant of yours at eight forty-seven Ralston Street from May first, twenty twenty-three until July thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. As you know, I really liked your place, but had to find another apartment due to the loud noise and music that came out of the new fraternity neighbors down the street. In addition to the noise, the amount of trash and foot traffic, uh obviously impaired young people was disturbing. I felt that it became an unsafe place for me to live alone. Again, thank you for letting me out of our agreement, um Marissa Fernandez. Uh do we have any other requests to speakers? Anyone else in the chamber wishing to speak on this item? Uh seeing none, uh I will bring it back to the commission for questions of the staff or applicant. Commissioner, say?
Question. Were we getting a distance of the voice?
Oh, answer your question, sorry. Thank you.
Bringing this data to the columns, calling in opposition to LDC twenty-four dash zero 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 two five, the Ralston Fraternity Sorority House. We own property just three houses down from there. These boys are there now and they are beer pong tables in their front yard. We have a vacation rental property there. We don't want any more fraternities there. Send them somewhere else. We are strongly opposed to this. These boys have no respect. They're, they're out there with no shirts on. Their property is ill-kept and we're very opposed to it. We do not want this to be turned into a fraternity. Any questions, you can call me at seven seven five three four eight seven six five two. Again, we are very, very, very opposed to another fraternity in our area.
Hey, this is John Disrisso. I just wanted to get my comment out there about the fraternity house over here on Ralston and the corner of University Drive, I think. I assume that the house is actually required to have proper zoning. I think if they're asking for the city to do something like that and the city should lay out some ground rules that are reasonable to what they're asking. Um I happen to live, like, directly in the line of sight of this house and I could not study that the pretty the area that we're in, it's definitely a state space for these kids and kind of block that theme. And it's more realistic, you know, I mean, that's the stuff that they're going to be allowed to do when they're older. Um but we should also outline, you know, maybe Friday, Saturday, Sunday are the days that they can, like, share it up, give complaints forever, not out of control, but you know. This Monday, Thursday, we don't want to hear complaints and we don't want to hear the cops or anything like that. I think if you were to lay out that outline structure, it would probably be more than official then in the long term instead of just telling them no, you know. People only perfectly would do their thing, otherwise they're just going to tear it down. Someone's going to turn into a an area of drug use, I mean, I'd argue, if that house shut down from within here, you're going to have a lot of homeless people in that thing quickly. So, I just.
My name is Jim Hoffman, um calling regarding case number uh LDC twenty-four zero 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 two five, Ralston Fraternity Sorority House. I, uh, the fraternity, the, the type, the K F or um Capa Sigma that's trying to get approved, um I rented to these folks. Um in one of my properties, I have thirteen buildings in that area, U N R area. Uh I've rented property since ninety-nine. The group that rented, that was associated with that fraternity, Capa Sigma, was the worst group in twenty-five years uh out of a hundred tenants every lease term that I've ever rented to. They tore my house apart. They have leaks open there all the time. They have neighbors calling on them, broken windows, a neighbor's houses, a car to park anywhere in the vicinity, multiple code violations that I was dealing with, um which they simply just didn't care. They were, you know, openly evicted on a number of items. Uh they owed thousands of dollars in back rent. Uh they blew up a furnace that was on a keep full um by turning it up to a hundred degrees and just leaking. They are the most irresponsible group of people uh that I met and it's the same that I've dealt with. It's the same group. Um the Stevenson family, uh Derek Stevenson uh was the one that was on the lease uh and he's currently the one that wants to run this fraternity. You know, I, like I said, thirteen buildings in that area, they, well, twenty-five years I've been doing it since nineteen ninety-five and they were the worst. I'll send some photos in, but I strongly encourage you guys to decline them. Uh people over there right now, there's a broken window out on the front uh that faces uh Ralston Street. It's been broken for weeks. There's a sheet that's half draped over it on a broken window and red cuffs everywhere. They have no respect for uh the, any neighborhood uh and they are, shouldn't be. You know, U N R strongly discourages students from joining their frat. They lost their charter. And um, you know, I have several buildings on the block that they're on. I don't want them there. They're not responsible. They're going to have problems. Um and that's my feedback. All right, thank you.
Hello, uh my name's Lou Hoffman, uh calling regarding is LDC two four zero 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 two five, Ralston Fraternity House. The people that rented, um the people that are trying to get this approved, rented one of uh my brother and I's property, they ruined it, they destroyed it completely, uh tens of thousands of dollars of damages. And uh on their way out, they were caught trying to steal um materials from the house. Um they were videoed and caught stealing stuff from the house on their way out. And it's the same people, Derek Stevenson, uh that's trying to get this proud off the ground at eight oh three, which is over there now. It's a mess at eight oh three Ralston. Uh I own twelve properties in that area. Um and I did a, my personal home as well as rental properties for over twenty years. These guys should not be approved. They do not respect anyone's property. They do not respect any neighborhood. Since they moved in over eight oh three, they destroyed. That's the property itself. There's windows broken out, smashed out. There's parties on the weekends until all hours, red cuffs everywhere. Um they are not a, a, a good group of people to be associated with, which is why university is about Reno. Uh strongly suggest that students don't rent, or rather don't uh join their fraternity because they lost their charter. You know, living on the, on the street, I don't want them on there. I know all the other neighbors don't want them on there. If they were in good standing with U N R and had an off-site representative, maybe, but they don't. And given that, the specific people, Derek Stevenson, um that got caught stealing and who completed this demolition of one of our properties should not uh be in charge of running any fraternity whatsoever. So thank you for your time.
Yes, good morning. Um my name is Pamela, the lead camp Sarah Lakey, and I live at three five eight West Eleventh Street and I'm calling about LDC two four dash zero 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 two five, the Ralston Fraternity House that's there on the corner across from the park. I don't think it should go there. We live just down the street from a couple of subordinates and the high the E T O house. They all had to apply through regular normal channels and they had rules and regulations to live by. I've gone by there, been called blank, blank, blank and I've walked my dog in the park and it's like, eh, man, you're okay. They're just, they're not. I don't think it should go there. Thank you. And I hope you have a lovely year. Bye.
That's the last question.
Uh so we can now close public comments and bring it back to the commission for questions. I think Manny, did you still want to start?
I'm happy to. Sure. Thanks, sure. Uh I guess, sure, for Ms. Stevenson.
Can you state your name?
Sure, Commissioner Sarah for the record. Uh Ms. Stevenson, have you spoken with residents, uh surrounding residents a- a- about this C E P in, since October? I know you mentioned you had gotten feedback in October about anything since then.
So the individuals, um directly to the west of us, the apartment complex right directly behind us on the same side of the block and then across the street, um there's two owners, the two, one that owns the two apartment complexes is the same owner, the other one. And I actually, am I allowed to have my husband or the members I brought with me speak? You've spoken to them?
Yeah, to the neighbors to the west.
Can you state your name?
Oh, I apologize. Kurt Stevenson. Yes. Uh Thomas, the neighbor to the west, I've spoken to him numerous times. He's, he's in, in favor of, for, he, he, he knows what's going in there. And we actually work really good together. If there's any problems, he, he's, has my number. We've spoken at the fence, like I said, several times about anything that he's concerned about and it's, it's fixed, so. And then a friend of mine owns the apartments will be to the northeast. There's two complexes there. And he, he also has my direct number two in case there's any type of complaints that, or anything we need to fix.
Great. Thanks for, for Stevens and Stevens. I do have a set of questions uh based on everything we've heard. I'll just do one, follow up for staff and then I'll give them up for others. The, Carter, the conditions that you've recommended, how did they address the concerns we've heard this evening, just in general from your own uh research into the C E P? Like, do they, what, what type of teeth or mouth teeth do they have to mitigate any future concerns?
Carter Williams, Assistant Planner, for the record. Um these, um there's a little back history to these consi- conditions that weren't necessarily tied to this, um to this case, but they, they're, they're generally applicable. Um we had another fraternity and sorority house um come in and it's actually the first one we had in a long time. There was a coordinated effort between the Reno Police Department, Code Enforcement and, and, and planning to kind of craft um a number of conditions that we could broadly apply. So the specific comments from the um Police Department was to generally bring up the property and particularly with landscaping to, uh I think they called it the broken window effect, to, so to, to reduce, um to put improvements into the property to, to reduce um other impacts or, or generally calls to service. They, they, um the points on the, uh the other points on, on calls to service and social gatherings is that, I mean, we're trying to reduce the number of people with, in these, um, these gatherings so to, so we don't see the same type of activity that, that resulted in those calls to service. And if they do have events that go over those, that twenty-five person limit, we have another, um, a special activity permit process that gets other departments involved, including the Reno Police Department, um the Fire Department, to, to review the application um to give recommendations per individual event. There were comments on signage. Um one of the conditions explicitly re- re- prohibits temporary signage, signage to be placed on, upon the building. And then generally, I, I, generally the other ones are about upkeep, I guess. But the occupancy limit too, um from an impact perspective, that, that was something that we applied from up, from, for parking. Not just that they can't meet the parking standards, but I think it also reduces the capacity for that building.
Great, thanks, Carter. Just a quick follow-up. So signage, you mean, like the Greek letters out somewhere on the, on the rooftop or wherever that you typically see on quote-unquote fraternity sorority world? So they're not allowed to have Greek letters?
They are not allowed to have temporary signs. So banners, um signs that would, um that are not permanent in nature. They are able to submit for a sign permit to, to um for tra- traditionally accepted um advertising for fraternities. Um and that would have to follow the uh sign standards for the MF thirty zone, which is fairly restrictive.
And I know we have, what you described is some, some mitigation efforts, but like what recourse is there? Could we walk through this situation where um the things we heard continue to happen and they become habitual? What recourse is there um to, to respond to that and apply some course correction?
There's a couple of layers um here. First, um is the social host, host ordinance, which is a, um, is a it's an ordinance that was adopted to address um disruptive gatherings citywide. So that's something that, um, that's in place now, that the Reno Police Department is able to, to implement. Um with the appro- uh with, with them being under a conditional use permit, we, it gives Code Enforcement extra teeth and specific items to go after um in, in the event of non-compliance. And that, that could go up, all the way up to a lien on the property if there's, there's non-compliance with the, the conditions here. The social host ordinance went in, uh goes into fines associated with disruptive gatherings as well as, uh there's a, there's a list of items that, that's in that ordinance that they have for recourse.
Great, thanks, Carter. You have my time a little bit.
Any other questions from the commission?
Can you, uh, pardon me? Excuse your name. Oh, excuse me. Sylvia, Commissioner Villanueva, uh for the record. Pardon me, bring up that sign, or sign, um, the map with the other fraternity houses on it. So you explained that these are all within, did you say half?
A quarter mile.
Quarter mile, okay. And have there been any complaints from, regarding those houses from neighbors?
I'm not aware of, of complaints on these ones. I did not look into that.
Oh, okay.
Um, yeah.
And what, you probably don't know this either, that the conditional, the conditions that you put in place for this particular application, do you, do you know if they're similar to what's currently in place for those?
I am not aware that any of these houses received a formal conditional use permit. If, if they did, it didn't, i- it would have been long ago where we wouldn't have applied conditions necessarily. I wasn't able to identify anything. So this would actually would be more restrictive than any other, any of the other houses on, on that strip.
What triggered this one, getting reviewed and not?
So there was a code enforce, well, the, the other ones, it would be, they're pre-existing to our code. This one, any fraternity and sorority house within M, the multifamily thirty zone requires a conditional use permit. There was a code enforcement case that was initiated that brought it to our attention and then, and then they submitted to respond to that.
Okay, so basically just the timing, those were in place prior and then this is coming in place after.
Correct.
But they are fairly similar in their use?
I would say so. I, I think that they have similar um size. I don't know about unit counts, um but I, I think that the outdoor gathering areas are the same, if not larger, at, at the other facilities.
Okay, and probably not going to know this one either, but do you know the, the, um, if there's a a cap on the amount of people that are permitted in those fraternities versus what would be permitted in this fraternity sorority?
That cap would be based off of the building occupancy, um not based on parking. So this, this cap that we're imposing is based on parking pretty much alone. We, they could actually have more residents based on the occupancy of the building, but the, the parking just, it does, doesn't.
Okay, so twelve parking spots is permitted and there's how many?
It's twelve residents.
Okay, or, or, excuse me, so twelve residents permitted, you, the number derived from parking spaces available.
Correct.
Or potentially available. How many veterans is the?
Uh, five that have livable space.
There's five livable spaces.
Yes. Yes. Oh, I apologize, um, Emily Stevenson.
So I take it double, they're gonna double up?
Double up. There's two rooms that are larger that I think they, um, have even discussed putting three or four in, um, with bunks, which is typical. I was in a sorority, actually the one right across the corner on the corner there of University Terrace, right where it bends, and we had six in one room, so.
Okay.
At the time, so. It's based off of my understanding and square footage of the property. And another reason that we chose to reduce the amount of people that we actually could have more occupancy in is so we could utilize that garage as more of a social gathering space away from the house outside of the yards and forego use of parking in there to increase the amount in the house.
Okay.
Uh, so it was kind of with that in mind to negate some of these issues that have come up.
So I, I may be going beyond scope and, um, but it's just out of curiosity. If I'm looking at this social host liability, do you guys have, what, I mean, for health and safety purposes and it, and I guess it does sort of fall within the scope of what we review, uh, from its health and safety of the community, what kind of liability insurance are we talking about? Do, I mean, do you guys have that kind of coverage, you know, to, to deal with in the event that there is underage, juvenile violations of this social host liability?
We do have our own just normal commercial insurance. I'm gonna let my husband speak to that, cause he's...
You're in the specifics, I'm just curious if there's...
Uh, I'm gonna let him speak to it, cause he set up the insurance on the property.
Kurt Stevenson, yes, we have insurance.
Could you mind coming down? We're limited on our realty, so we won't be sharing a cage on the table.
Oh, Steve, Kurt Stevenson, yes, we have an insurance broker that, uh, knows the use of the property and he put in place, we have a policy, um, to ensure that all, all of those gatherings are covered in case something were to happen.
All right, thank you, um, no questions, no further questions at this time.
I, I would also like to add that, um, the fraternity covers the boys as well, as well as the activities in the house through the housing board, uh, which these gentlemen behind me could speak to as well, if you wanted to.
Yeah, Commissioner Linas for the record. Um, Ms. Stevenson, can I ask specifically, was this property purchased for the sake of making a fraternity sorority?
No, it wasn't. My husband and I have been looking at investment properties for actually probably about two years. We met with a couple of different realtors, saw different places throughout the, the entire area. I mean, even up northwest Reno, out in kind of Spanish Springs area, um, with the idea of just having an investment property. Um, they, this house did become available, um, and our son was in Kappa Sigma. He's, um, he's no longer at the university. He now lives in Fallon. He will not be running this project. He's not on the housing board. Um, but he still talks to the kids in there as an alumni and said they were actively looking through a house through their national fraternity as they have not lost their charter, they are in good standing with UNR. And, um, UNR actually support, supported their, you know, search for a house, a place. Um, and again, the gentleman behind me can speak to it, they're both alumni, but I believe they met on campus prior to this for their weekly meetings. Um, so they actually too have and enjoy university support.
Thank you. Any further questions? Uh, we're gonna move into discussion.
Commissioner Murmira, um, I'm very torn in this particular case. And I want to point out that there's a lot of referral to these residents as kids and boys, but these are grown men over the age of eighteen who are not, you know, demonstrating through testimony to be good neighbors. Um, and that concerns me. From a land use perspective, I think that the conditions that are being put upon the conditional use permit are very strong and would be even harder to meet. Um, so I think I could be encouraged by the discussion of my fellow commissioners.
Further discussion?
Yeah, Commissioner Minasok. Unfortunately, and what I was hoping after reading the emails and the voicemails before we got here and then again hearing them, um, a lot of times we hear a lot of positive that comes from sorority fraternities. And I haven't heard one positive, uh, thing from testimony tonight. I haven't heard one positive, um, we haven't seen one positive email, we haven't heard one positive voicemail, anybody in, uh, favor of this and, and in favor of this happening. Um, and so that, that leads me to to the, the position of where I know, I know these organizations do have and can have positive impacts. Um, and, and it is, uh, someone who went to college is someone who attended, uh, functions like this when, when I was younger and I understand, uh, the need to desire for them. But then I come to the other side, uh, as a, as a family man, as someone who, who owns property and to think of the, the people that live in this area now and having to have one of these, uh, places moving next to me would be a nightmare, for lack of a better term, it'd be an absolute nightmare. And it's something that I would not, uh, not want in my neighborhood. So I can understand the other side of this, of people, uh, coming and saying, yeah, this is not something that we want or not something we support. So I am really looking for the, um, the temperament of the, of the Commission here to kind of see where everybody else is leaning and what they're thinking. And, um, I did not come into this with my mind made up by any means. I wanted to hear testimonies on both sides. Um, and like I said at the beginning of my, of my statement, getting that, um, and only really hearing one side of it, which was mostly negative. Um, I am curious to see what the rest of the Commission wants to say.
Commissioner Vasara?
Sure. Uh, my, I'm with Commissioner Murmira and Linas, share that sentiment, share that position. I think we all want to hear testimony beyond that which we've heard to try to balance things out. And I think we have an opportunity. We have two gentlemen who seemingly are a part of the organization fraternity that is, uh, being called into question. And perhaps it would be appropriate if my fellow commissioners could indulge me, if we could invite them to the DIAS and maybe speak to some claims or...
I, I think... Yeah, so, I, what I would su, what I would suggest is appropriate, there's a specific question that Commissioner Vasara has for, uh, the applicant with respect to the fraternity.
Is there one going about two questions or a discussion right now?
Right, so I would suggest if, if there's a specific question, we could go back to questions. I could indulge that. Can we seek the counsel or legal? Yeah. Somebody ask some other questions of some of the, uh, the folks in the, in the room here? Yep, that's fine. Great, thank you. We'll go back to questions. Commissioner Vasara, you may ask your question or line of questions.
Sure, gentlemen.
I'm gonna ask that you just fill out, call that first, that way I have this all in your name.
We don't have a set of questions as much as an opportunity for you perhaps, because you, you all heard what we've heard. You've probably read the application that, uh, believe, or you missed your Stevenson?
No, no, I'm not.
No, okay. Um, are you familiar with the application being submitted? Um, so you have a bit of content and context about what's been said and what's been written. Would you like to shed some light?
Um, yes, I would. So, um, my name is Garrett Olson. I am the alumnus advisor for the Kappa Sigma fraternity at the University of Nevada. Um, what that means is I'm in charge of all chapter operations. I have to approve them, they get run by me. Um, I am usually well aware of things that are going on. The boys are, I'm sorry, the young men in this fraternity usually are, are very transparent actually with me. Um, I have a great relationship, I, I just want to noted, um, I have a great relationship with the fraternity and sorority life director at the University of Nevada. He has my personal cellphone. He often states in my advising group is the most active of all advising groups for fraternities and sororities. Um, recently, when he and I met for lunch, uh, I think it was actually late November, he told me that he does not get many complaints of our fraternity. So hearing this public comment, um, I don't understand. It kind of seems like, um, in my personal opinion, there is some directed, um, issues more specifically with an individual who is an alumni. Um, like you asked earlier, Derek Stevenson. Uh, Derek Stevenson is not on the housing board. He is, um, an alumni, just in that status. Um, personally, I have, uh, heard of the individual who made the complaint regarding him. Um, I know that they had discrepancies, but that's between them. Um, I have been an advisor for this fraternity for six years. I have never signed a lease stating that this fraternity will rent as the fraternity from anyone other than Kurt and Emily Stevenson. So to say that, um, we, as an organization, have rented from another individual and destroyed their property, I, not as an organization, I cannot, um, I cannot say that is true. Um, once again, I do just want to stress, um, we have a very large alumni and advising group that oversee chapter development. Um, we did get, um, Kurt and Emily did tell us, um, that, you know, they're hearing, um, complaints once in a while and this was early on and we nipped it and we told them that if we continue on, people will be evicted. We did, um, evict two individuals for the purpose of other individuals in the household said that they were too loud. So we take our studies very seriously. Um, the whole reason of being in a fraternity is to get a little bit of that social aspect at the university as well as progress your professional development. We do sh, a lot of networking, um, and community service. Uh, it has not been renewed, but oh, five years ago, the city of Reno recognized December tenth as Kappa Sigma's Founder's Day due to the heavy amount of philanthropy work that our chapter has put in, into this community. And we continue to do that every semester.
Um, my name is Scott Salomura. I'm actually one of the founders for this fraternity, so back in twenty fourteen, um, I helped start this organization. You know, I've been involved with them for almost ten years now, um. You know, and then this time I've seen this fraternity grow, um, you know, not from, starting from, you know, four individuals to as high as ninety, um. You know, I am also, uh, the Risk Management Director for the Housing Corporation, so, um, you know, I'm also aware of, you know, what goes on in the house, um. And, you know, we have, you know, we have bylaws that we follow, um. But what I, what, what I can say is, you know, these individuals, you know, they're in college, you know, it, it's okay to have fun, but, you know, I've never seen them, um, destroy any property, um, or anything like that. Um, you know, our pillars for our fraternity are fellowship, leadership, scholarship and service. And, you know, we take that oath and we are initiated to, um, you know, live by those rules and, you know, we hold them accountable to that.
Um, I also would like to mention, um, I am not on the Housing Corporation, but I stand as the chapter's, uh, representative for all, um, matters. Um, and I do just want to state, um, we enforce a code of conduct with our, um, the members of our fraternity. And then the housing also has, um, housing bylaws that they have to, um, adhere to if they do not...
To interject, but if there's not a specific question, we're gonna have to treat this as public comment with a limit of three minutes, which I think we're either at or exceeding, I don't see the timer, but, um, so I'll ask one more time, is, is there a specific question or we bring it back to discussion?
Last question, what's Plan B if this isn't approved for the fraternity and for the property owner?
Um, so the university, um, is actually our Plan B. They do have, um, they work with quite a few tenants, or I'm sorry, not tenants, landlords in the area that, um, are seeking, uh, groups to move into their homes. Um, this kind of worked out in a situation where, um, we are, um, we're in an agreement with a, a family friend, basically, um, a friend of a friend's, uh, family, um, whereby we won't be subjected to high rent prices that are, um, that we're constantly seeing right now in our area. So our Plan B would go to the university. And, um, last time I checked, the university did say that there were a few open houses. They just need to wait for the group or mem, or individuals in that house to leave.
Thank you.
Can you state your name?
Garrett Olson.
Thank you. This is being recorded on a digital recorder, so they can't see your face.
Oh, okay.
It's really important to state your name.
Thank you, gentlemen. Ms. Stevenson, would you like to respond to that question too, or?
Yes. No, I'm... Um, our Plan B, again, we did not purchase this property with the intent of it being a fraternity house. Um, so we would be looking for a group of college students, not club or, you know, related or possibly another single family who wants to rent the property. Um, our plan would still be to rent it out. That was the intent of the purchase of the property. Um, and part of the, uh, this was Willow Springs for a very long time and it operated as a old folks' home, I know, completely different concept with the college kids. Um, however, that was kind of what gave us the thought that this would be something that we could work through and get permitted and, um, you know, support the, the kids at the university, um, as well as the neighborhood. I mean, I think you guys have read our application and seen it, but the amount of homeless people across the street at that park has been substantially reduced since our tenants have moved in to the property. Um, but yes, our, our plan would be to rent it out in some other type of fashion. Yeah.
Any further questions from anyone on the Commission or can we go back to discussion? See none, we will go back to discussion, uh, any other discussion that is on the Commission? Commissioner Villanueva?
So, um, I do share in the same sentiments that the rest of my commissioners had with respect to some of the other families in the community. Similar in many of you, I'm a homeowner. Um, I do care about, you know, my neighbors that come in. Uh, but at the same time, um, I do acknowledge that, you know, we have the other sororities that are, is it a quarter mile? I'm sorry, don't, a quarter mile, uh, less than a quarter mile away and we haven't had, um, there really hasn't been any issues with those folks. So I'm confident that, um, given that you know what it's taken you guys to get this far, that you'll, uh, be good neighbors, um, and, y- you know, this is a privilege. Um, and so we're, we're hoping that you guys, um, understand that. And I just don't see, well, e- you know, I don't, within, with the land use, within the land use, um, per view, I don't see how we can say no to them. Um, I mean, I guess legally I can see how we can say no to them because the others have been in place, um, before you, you all have come into the picture. But, um, but from a fairness perspective, um, it seems like we have these neighbors in the same area and they haven't had any complaints. I do have concern about the park, uh, because my concern is that this is a fraternity house and there may be some back and forth between the park. Um, so I am also hopeful that there, that that's also being monitored because I don't, I, I, I would hate to see, um, not only the neighbors impacted by what's happening on the house, but that also, um, being pushed into the park. So that's kind of where I stand, but I, I'd love to hear more from the other commissioners.
Any additional thoughts, or may I jump in?
Please.
Uh, so yeah, this one's tough for me for kind of the reasons that we've been... Oh, sorry, Commissioner Armstrong. Uh, so this one is difficult for me, uh, for similar reasons that were brought up by the other commissioners. Um, on the one hand, I get that it's not, it's not the ideal needed, that folks would want it. And, um, it sounds like there have been a lot of legitimate issues in the community around some of the other, um, fraternity sorority houses. Again, are legitimate, um, you know, kind of approach, approaching light in some ways with, with the trash and the obscenity and things like that. Um, but the other part of it that was challenging for me from just like an administrative perspective and sort of what the Commission has to do, it, it seems to be in the appropriate location for something like this given the sorority fraternity row, everything being within a quarter mile. Um, I can get more comfortable because staff has put some pretty rigid conditions on this um, that I think are, are definitely appropriate. Um, it seems also that the landlord, uh, by virtue of the lease, has some pretty rigid, um, requirements. Specifically, the monthly kind of inspection, I think is really important in conjunction with, um, there's a number of like code and just sort of administrative, um, remedies. in conjunction with, um, there's a number of like code and just sort of administrative, um, remedies, right? Like if, if it gets out of line to the point that, um, it is unbecoming lawful, et cetera, you know, there's, there's penalties, um, you know, from the municipal level that kind of exists outside of the lease. So, I, I think it's harder to to not approve it, um, based on like the scope and the findings that we have to make. Even though from like a normative position, I can understand where there's pushback. So those are my thoughts for now, I'd welcome, you know, response.
Sure. Commissioner Visser for the record, um, let's see, I'm, I'm still not over the fence. I think I felt the commissioners know, probably by now that I'm a stickler for community outreach. There was a big one a few months back, uh, wonderful group, but they dropped the ball on reaching out to their fellow neighbors and, um, and that was a deal breaker for me. I know that Mr. Stevenson, you mentioned, you know, your immediate neighbors you're in contact with, but it sounds like there are some folks in the vicinity, in that same block, that have shared some concerns. And I didn't hear, uh, any effort in addressing maybe those concerns or talking with them since October, uh, which would have been a prime opportunity to try to reach out and say, hey, I know this year's been rough, but here's what we're planning to do, we'd love for you to be a part of it, right? And so, and maybe I'm wrong, but I had heard that. And there is a plan B for, for these young men and young ladies in the future. And so as of now, unless I hear otherwise, I'm deciding on the, on the no, unfortunately.
Thank you for your truth, sir. Uh, any further discussion?
I'll just add a little more thing.
Sure.
Commissioner Villanueva, I, I did, uh, Commissioner Armstrong, you did make a good point as far as, uh, the conditions from staff. I think that they did a good job with those conditions. And then, um, obviously, we can't keep going back with the lease, it's not really something we have control over. All we can do is take you for your word today and, and the additions that you've added into that lease. Um, you know, it's not really something we have control over, um, but I do appreciate that additional, um, those additional standards. So I, I am gonna support this, um, it is a tough one though, uh, because we all know what it's like to, to have a home and, uh, you know, have a family and, and know how this may impact, uh, each of us if it were, you know, our neighborhood. So, um, but I am gonna support this.
Question for staff?
Uh, okay.
Question?
Yep.
Commissioner Visser for the record, is this CUP, um, in perpetuity or is it just for the current property owner?
Carter Williams, Assistant Planner for the Record, so it is in perpetuity until the use changes? Or in, I mean, uh, there is also a possibility that it could be rescinded by this commission in the future. Um, so that, um, so there, it's not in perpetuity truly, but it, from a, from a land use perspective, it, it exists until it's taken away.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Reeves?
Yeah, Commissioner, Commissioner Mermer, um, kind of wondering what, I, I have a feeling what everybody else is thinking, I kind of wanted your take on this.
I am going to support it because I find the conditions that have been put on this site are really very lofty. Um, and I feel that if they're not met, there will be additional code enforcement issues and there's an opportunity to rescind this, this is a last chance.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, Commissioner Minas, I, I want to get on the record here. This is something when, when I, when we first got this and I was able to go through it, as I stated earlier, I was not by any means mind made up on, on which way I was gonna go. I was really looking forward to staff's, um, presentation and I was leaning heavily and am leaning heavily on that. As I said earlier, coming at this, uh, as a homeowner and someone who would be very very, um, what's the word I want to use here? Cautious on supporting something like this next to me or in my neighborhood. I do appreciate the lengths that staff went through to protect the neighborhood. And I believe they are taking steps that we haven't seen before to do that. What is pushing me towards a yes on this is going to be the other sorority fraternity that are in the area. If it was for not that, this would be a definite no. So because of those two things, because of, of what the area is already being used as in a very short corridor right there and the steps that staff put in, I can, I can meet the conditions of this, so I will be supportive.
Thank you. Uh, can I entertain a motion? Okay.
Commissioner Villanueva for the record, I'd like to make a motion with respect to Item C twenty-four zero 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 two-five, uh, based upon the climateally applicable findings, I wish to approve the conditional use permits, or excuse me, conditional use permit subject to conditions listed in the staff report.
Do I have a second?
Commissioner Mermer, a second.
Go to a roll call vote, Commissioner Villanueva?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner Visser?
No.
Commissioner Mermer?
Yes.
Commissioner Armstrong, yes. Uh, the motion passes, good luck with your project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're now closed out item five point three and item five, Public Committee General, we move to item six. Truckee Meadows Regional Fringe Liaison Board, go lead with that.
Mike Rayly for the record, no, uh, they, uh, focusing.
Okay. Closing item six, moving to item seven, staff announcements.
Yeah, once again, Mike Rayly for the record, um, just a couple of quick announcements. The January eightth Plan Question Meeting is going to cancel, but we do not have any items for that agenda, so our next meeting will be the first meeting actually in February. At the last meeting, Commissioner Visser had requested a kind of a year-end summary of the projects that have dealt with. Plus, the staff is working on that presentation now, that will come to the second meeting in February. Um, also in February, we'll have a presentation on housing pre-institution, potential boots. Um, and your staff, um, is going to address affordable housing in the community. And then the code amendment workshops that we discussed a couple of things back, those are going to start with the planning commission, a series of workshops beginning in March. So those are kind of our beginning of the year announcements and what you have to look forward to.
Wonderful. Thanks, Mike. Uh, closing item seven and opening item eight, commissioners' suggestions for future agenda items. Do I have any suggestions from the commission?
Um, no suggestion, I do have a question, oh, Commissioner Villanueva. A question for, uh, for you, Mike Rayly. So we've, obviously, we've had the presentations for the new ordinance, is that gonna come before us or if we didn't attend one of the meetings, does that not?
They will come before you, so at once those workshops, we go through those workshops, we'll come back with the final draft, so to speak, and the code amendments.
Okay.
That will cover the planning question, then you will make recommendations on it.
Okay, and then the, and then I know we have also the workshops for the, what is it, the A Ds or the P Ds?
A D use?
A D use, yes, A D use. Uh, are those gonna come before us or?
Yes, they will, um, Angela, as I mentioned, her housing presentation, that will be part of that initial introduction and then it will come back. Do for a
Okay, great.
Uh, seeing no other suggestions or questions, we'll close item eight, moving to item nine, public comment. Deciding this to be their public comment on any action item or for any general public comment.
Yeah.
There anyone in the chambers wishing to speak?
I did not receive any voicemails, no correspondence, and no request to speak was received.
See none, we will close item none. Uh, moving to number ten, adjournments, do I have a motion?
So moving, Commissioner Minas.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.